Good evening. It is May 18th, and this is the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. I'd like to call that meeting to order and begin it as we always do by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Julia, if you could lead us, I would appreciate that.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we go to our agenda, the first item, as always, is public comment. Due to a conflict with the junior senior high concert tonight, oh, someone is coming. That's Lisa. So no, she's not a public comment person. We'll just wait 30 seconds in case someone comes in, and if not, we'll proceed with the agenda as listed with one short amendment. I don't think we're gonna have any. If you guys will allow it, we have Sean Pine, the elementary school principal here tonight, and I'd like to go off the agenda for a moment and allow him to give us a brief presentation.
Sure.
Sean.
Thank you. Thank you for accommodating me. Very brief, but some wonderful news. Recently, the First Lady of New Hampshire, Valerie Sununu, has been working with Scholastic in getting a book donation program for elementary schools in New Hampshire. This year, there are five schools selected throughout the state. New Market Elementary School has been selected. We're receiving a donation of 100 books from Scholastic. First Lady will be in our building on June 1st for a brief reception. She's gonna do, read some stories to the kids who live in the building as well. I'd like to extend an invitation to you all, if you have that time. I realize it's during the workday, but 9:30 is when we will be starting. Would be wonderful if you could come down. Another thing.
That's a wonderful announcement.
Yeah, yeah. It was just completely, very much a surprise that your secretary called me and said, "We have selected New Market. I've heard of a lot of things, good things are happening there." And she lives locally, so we're looking forward to having her. We're in the process of kind of planning a small get-together, keeping it kind of low-key, have her read to about, probably three groups of kids, two classroom groups at a time. And Scholastic representative will be there as well to share the books with us. We've already received the books. We have it out in the boxes. We're passing the whole document. It will be exciting.
Great.
Great. That's awesome.
And the other thing I'd just like to say, since we're on the air, is I'd also like to give a great round of thanks to our police department and the fire department. They were down at the rec today with the kindergarten field trip, and they provided a fire truck and police car for a toucher truck so the kids could go in and sit in, make the sirens go, blow the horns. That was all put together by Nancy Miller, so kudos to her. Another fantastic program that she does. So, thank you very much for your time.
Please, please keep coming with all this great news.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Good night.
Now, if we return to our agenda, the first thing that I see is student report. Julia, would you like to do that and review the calendar of events?
Sure. So, there's not gonna be any school on May 29th. Yesterday, the junior senior high school chorus and band put on a concert for the elementary school kids. That was really cool. I didn't even know that was happening until I was there and they saw everything. I was like, woo. Sports, softball, it's records three and 10. Their next game, they had a game tonight, so I'm not sure what the results of that were, but they're playing May 20th, Saturday, against Farmington. It's away. The boys' record is nine and three, and they also had a game tonight, and they're also playing away against Farmington on Saturday. Track, their state meet is Saturday, the 27th, and they have a lot of kids going. So, yeah, and the four-by-four is second in the state for Division III, so, yeah, that's really exciting. I think it is anyways. Seniors begin finals on May 30th. The spring concert is tonight, started at 6:30. National Honor Society induction will be May 23rd at 6:00 in the cafeteria. The top 10 lunch will be May 25th. Improv show will be Friday, June 2nd at 7 o'clock in the elementary school. This week was Spirit Week. I'm not sure what the days were, but it was Spirit Week. And their spring concert is May 25th at 6:30.
For the elementary school?
Yes.
Can you go back to top 10 again and tell me what that is?
So, the top 10, the students with the top 10 GPAs in the senior class, they, they take them out to lunch. It's a mystery lunch. I know it's in Portsmouth. Don't know where in Portsmouth, but, yeah.
And the students will be coming to the board meeting on June 1st, I believe, for recognition.
Great.
Tell us a little bit about their, their plans.
Great.
Meredith, anything else?
Not at this moment.
All right.
Do we want to talk about graduation at all?
Graduation is June 9th.
I'm saving it for the next meeting.
All right.
I believe the prom is tomorrow night.
Yes, it is.
So, be fun and have fun.
It's at the Red Barn in South Berwick.
Be safe and have fun, everyone. The next thing we'll go to is the superintendent report. Meredith, do you want to do that, or do you want to do the assistant?
This one first, just so I can use the technology. So, Assistant Superintendent Chris Andruski is at concert tonight in Portsmouth for the junior senior high students. And so, yesterday, with the help of our library media specialist at the junior senior high, he recorded his presentation for you on curriculum updates, and immediately behind your packet is a three or four-page handout from him that will be helpful to you as you watch this. I just want to make sure our audio is gonna work, but we'll find out in a second. I think it's on the table behind you. Thank you. That'll work much better. Your speaker out.
On the bottom right.
Try again.
On the bottom right of the whole thing.
Yeah. Let's try it. Unplug and replug. If at first you don't succeed. Speaker out. Line in. Again. Seems like it's speaker out tonight. And it does not matter. All right. Well, this is exciting. I can't deliver his report as well, so maybe we'll come back to this in a few minutes, and maybe Lisa or Julia can help me troubleshoot it, and I'll do my report first.
Okay. Sounds perfect.
We should look at it. I'll try.
The video's there. Okay. Sorry. I don't want to hold up the public. But we'll come back to that. I'm sure we can make it work, and if not, we can do it at another meeting. And then he could even be here.
Yes.
So, I'll start by sadly just letting the board know that our teacher, Jacques Barrio, will not be returning to us next year. He's accepted a position in Massachusetts, so we wish him well. And then, let me jump into some of the other, the exciting things going on around here. Last night, some of you know from personal experience, it was the eighth grade science fair at the rec center. It was a warm evening, and it was a jam-packed site, but there were some great projects, and I, I expect that we'll probably be bringing a couple of those students to you at a subsequent meeting to share some of their work, but a lot of great research on a variety of topics. Everything from which shoes give you the best advantage in basketball, to robotic hands and fracking, and, yeah, wonderful selection of topics.
Face recognition.
It was just amazing to see. Kids take their passion, too. There was one young lady who had, who loves Greek mythology and did everything on arches and how the weight can hold arches.
I mean.
I can't even think. There was one on soil, which I thought faster than I'm trying to grow stuff.
How, how listening to music affects your ability to concentrate and complete assignments or take tests.
And peppermint tea. Peppermint.
Peppermint.
It was just, there was so much, and the sad thing is, it was so tight that you couldn't see. I missed so many in the middle because I just couldn't get there. But the food was delicious. Lori Gims and John Kennison provided, and all of Pierre's.
Again, one of many events, as you heard Julia point out, going on right now. The third, fourth, and fifth graders enjoyed the performance at the junior senior high yesterday. It was a hot day to walk over and back, but they were a great audience, and it certainly led to a fun ambiance, I think, at the concert itself, just to have, you know, a different audience to perform in front of, and a full house in the gymnasium, I think, just is, is fun. And I'm sure tonight's concert at the Music Hall in Portsmouth will be equally great.
It also takes away that scary cry of the high school, middle school, like they're visiting it.
Yeah. A lot of high fives from younger kids to older kids who are there, and it exposes our younger students to the music program and builds their interest early, which is great. The New Market Business Association is forming an education committee, so I've met with a couple of folks from that organization. There's a meeting being planned for early June to try to get that off the ground and do some thinking about what would be helpful to the business community, and, and also what would be beneficial to the school district and how we can help each other. So, I look forward to that. Last Friday afternoon was a workshop day, but I feel better that these two brilliant minds cannot solve this yet.
It's annoying.
Could you switch the speaker out? Switch to the speaker out instead of the Dell speaker out? See if that matters? Okay, sorry. I digress.
Found the speakers. They were on the ground.
But it should be through the HDMI running directly through the television.
That might be a different plug.
Maybe if we take the speaker out, out, it will work better.
Let me check for a second.
All right. I guess I will stop there because I'm obviously distracted. I apologize.
So, ladies, does it look like we're gonna be able to?
What happens if we just take it out?
All right, they're not giving up.
All right, so I gotta say this. So, we had our last, let me just go on because we need to pass on the baton for project graduation. So, we had our last bingo. All our monies have been counted. Project graduation's planned. We do need the junior parents, we need somebody to come and get the stuff, and then they need to, yeah, it's in Julia's house. And then we need, and we need somebody to take it over. If anybody's willing, please reach out to Diane Leary, or you can email me at my email for the school board. But, come on down.
Thank you guys for the hard work that you've done with that all year, with the bingo and planning project graduation.
It's all for the kids.
Why don't we go ahead while we're still working on this to the committee reports? Are there any reports, updates on anything? Mike, do you have any updates from the building committee?
Since the recent HDMI bodywork.
Next facility committee meeting is, is Wednesday, next week, the 24th. 6:30 downstairs, as always. It's open to public. People want to come, and we will be recording it if people can't make it and they want to watch it, so.
Mike, speaking of that, for the benefit of people that may not have seen last week's meeting, we voted to bond the entire amount of the project for 30 years.
Correct.
So, that is in the process moving forward, so it's a step in the process of the building process. So, I just wanted to update the public on that.
What time is the meeting, Mike? It's 6:30 next Wednesday, the 24th.
24th.
And the SST board meeting is next Monday.
Monday night.
5 o'clock. Perfect.
And that'll be my first meeting.
Perfect. I can't wait to hear you report that, Dinger, that our next meeting. That'll be exciting. One of the things that, at the public forum before we decided on the bonding information, I met with Dale Pike, who's the chair of the town council, to talk about the next combined meeting that, oh, it's on our agenda later on.
Yes.
So, I will defer these com, or else I can go ahead and talk about it now since, as we wait. But basically, the committee that existed, which was myself and Al from the school board, and Tony Weinstein and Dale from the town council will be coming to a close because we've done what we set up to do at this point. What we might do, the four of us, if you guys approve it, is have sort of a close-out meeting to review where we are thus far, and then knowing that in September, we will plan another joint meeting in both entities for the school board and the town council to see, sort of for Meredith and Steve and the people, Lisa in the business administration role and the person that's coming into the, the facilities role, to sort of give us a check-in as to where we are on all those things and how things are going to that point, and determine if there, if and when there'll be any future stuff.
I spoke with Dale today, and they talked at the council meeting last night about doing it in June, getting.
So, the original date that I had from the town administrator as of, before the meeting was August 30th.
Because I had heard September. So, I will, I will get with Dale, Al.
You can, through smoke signals here, Dale and I suggested that maybe we pass it on to Meredith to, 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 to get a date.
Yeah.
That's fine, buddy.
But I think there was some discussion about doing it earlier. That's why.
I mean, it's, June is just tough for us for a myriad of reasons, but I think my preference would be delaying it so that we could have the facilities person have started and have some time under his belt so that he can give as effective a presentation as he can when we get to the point. So, Meredith, if you will take the lead on that, and my preference would be August, August, September timeframe. So, we'll take that from there.
Just so we're not confused, but there's two meetings.
Yes, the close-out.
The close-out and then the joint meeting. I'm talking about the close-out.
Ah, well, yes. The, the, the close-out could be June. I think that's appropriate.
Yes.
But the joint meeting should be August.
That's correct.
Now, I follow.
Yes, okay. So, the close-out meeting will be sometime in June, or the board will report back, probably on the 15th.
Get that, get that done. Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's perfect.
And if, if Meredith would work on that, then we can put together an agenda.
Okay.
Yep.
And get it posted and all those things. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Al.
Yep.
Any other committee reports that I'm missing?
No, I'll just note, as we talked about at the last meeting, the senior senior collaborative board of directors meeting with Kimola Tend is scheduled for May 31st.
And I will be there. It's exciting. Great things are happening. This First Lady of New Hampshire's coming to our school with books.
Well, you know, it's interesting, though, when you, when you, when Sean mentioned that, this whole support schools and school funding, I think to have somebody like that here is a good, it's a good thing for New Market. You know, politically, it's just a wonderful opportunity to say, "By the way."
Maybe we can have it at the Boiler Room.
That could be.
Nice 90-degree day.
Yep.
That's exciting.
Can we move into the policies?
Yes, let's move into the policies. And as you all saw, and as the public saw, they went online to see our, our packet, we have quite a few policies, sorry, to discuss tonight. And I know this, Meredith, is the first meeting of them, but I know that people had some questions about them, so if you would take the lead on that, I would appreciate it.
So, I'll just walk through them. As, as we've talked about it a couple of different points this year, we have a number of policies that need to be updated. The board didn't have time to devote attention to that prior to March, and so, as we appointed committee members, we've appointed a policy committee chair and member, and so, we're starting to get that work moving forward. Many of these are required policies under state law. All of these policies have been reviewed by the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Much of the language, many of the, much of the language changes that you see recommended have come directly from the School Boards Association. I, I know I've spotted at least one typo thus far, but I'll, I'll just walk through these briefly and then.
How often do they recommend that we review them? I noticed several of these were, looked like it was 2007, so 10 years ago.
Typically, anytime the law changes.
Okay.
Anytime. Otherwise, you want to be doing them probably at least within a five-year cycle. And so, there, our manual needs some updates because we have a number of policies that, that are older than that, as you point out.
And we get started it and then change and attendance, and it just fell to the wayside. But that's your main job.
Yeah.
And your policy manual looks.
Well, it's bigger than the binder, so there's a lot of, of work to do in moving through it. Our hope is, we'll do some at this meeting, and then what, what Kim and I have talked about is scheduling a, a policy workshop during the summer where we can spend a good half-day working through a, a large chunk of policies to be able to bring those to you prior to the start of the next school year.
Yeah. I think it's, you know, it speaks to the changes in education, too, and different philosophies for dealing with cer, with certain situations that we need to address.
So, the first policy that you see in your packet is policy JH regarding attendance, absenteeism, and truancy procedures, and some of these legal changes went into effect in 2012. I will say procedurally, this is the work that we've been doing, but your policy hasn't caught up to the law. And so, for example, you know, if students have chronic absences, and, and by that we mean typically more than 10, 10 to 15, we are taking steps to identify that, reach out to parents, try to put some plans in place to, well, first, see what's causing those attendance issues, and second, try to take some proactive steps to address those absences. Because we know that if you look at risk factor, risk factors for academic failure, chronic absenteeism is near the top of the list. And so, whether you're an elementary-age child who's beginning to miss a lot of school, or a junior senior high school student, it, it has, it can have an impact on your performance. And so, we want to be making sure that we're paying attention to those absences and taking steps to address it.
And I know that even when I was teaching four-year-olds, I had to explain that to parents, that regular attendance starts as soon as they start school. I mean, I, I say that partly because I've been listening to the discussions about full-day kindergarten and similar.
I can share with you.
There's no need for kindergarten. There is a need, and there's a, a need for regular attendance, even at age four.
Absolutely. And, you know, we only have 180 days, 181 days essentially in the school year, and, and when you're missing 10 or 15, it's a surprisingly large chunk of instruction that you have students miss out on.
Who is that truant officer?
Our school resource officer helps serve that function, and usually at the request of the building principal or assistant principal.
So, it's the resource?
School resource officer.
That was one of my questions, too. One of the questions, one of the notes I made, which is really an editorial thing, was to, as you're editing, to make sure that all he's are he-she's and all his are his-hers.
Okay.
His slash hers. And I ask this because I'm not familiar with truancy law, but I, I know I, I, the states say, you know, if the, if there's truancy and there's regular absenteeism, it cuts the state's funding based on attendance.
So, average daily, average daily membership is part of what the state looks at in providing adequacy aid to the school, and so, we, we certainly track that, and we slide those reports to the state twice a year. We are having technical difficulties, but I thank my team for helping me out over here. They've been enlisted unwilling or willing or not. So, you're, you're absolutely right. It, it impacts the district as well, but more, most importantly, it's impacting that, that student's learning. And the legal references are on, on the very back page, but you can see there are a number of them that define truancy, parent's responsibility regarding attendance, those different pieces.
I haven't plugged in yet.
So, the next section that we have is actually procedural, and the board may or may not choose to adopt that as a procedure. You could defer it to be administrative procedure and not have it be in your policy manual. Either way, the intent of that particular procedure is to address excessive absenteeism due to illness, because illness is also a reason that students are absent. It's not, it can be for a variety of reasons, but that one is significant, and if a student is missing a significant amount of time in school due to an illness that's a recurring illness or a long-term illness, it, it lays out essentially, again, that we'll meet with the family, that we'll obtain documentation when necessary from a physician, but also that we, as a school district, will provide academic assistance to students who are missing more than 10 days in a quarter due to illness.
I mean, I, I think that it would be a good thing to have the procedure in place in the policy book to, to, so that if there's ever a situation where teams change or, or staffing changes, there's consistent enforcement of the policy. So, that just, we can, we can decide that later on, but this is what I thought of.
The next policy, and you can see the changes highlighted in red, is policy JC, JIC regarding student conduct. And it just requires, with respect to a special education suspension, that there'll be an informal evaluation of the student's placement. So, the team will come together to talk about, are we, is the student in the least restrictive environment to meet his or her educational needs? And that's the responsibility of the IEP team. And again, it just codifies what is already a legal responsibility and a requirement for us under IDEA regulations, but if a special education student's suspensions reach 10 cumulative days, we have an obligation to, to determine whether or not the IEP for that child is appropriate.
My only question was gonna be about that, because I know some places it's extraordinarily strict where a specialized student cannot be suspended even.
Yeah, the law, the law allows special, students with special needs, just like any other student, to be suspended from school. It doesn't mean that the district is not responsible for continuing to provide education, and that, that's what the team has to look at, and it's continued, considered a disruption to that child's education after 10 days. Again, the legal references are attached there. Yeah, it has audio, I promise you. I checked. This is distracting all of us now. I apologize.
Maybe we'll just wait. Should we just wait?
That's okay. JICI, weapons on school property. And as you saw, your, your policy on record here was from 2008, so there have been some legal changes in that timeframe, so this just brings us up to date with what the law requires, provides specific definitions of what are considered weapons in school, makes clear that law enforcement personnel are allowed under the law to carry weapons in, in the school, and that students will receive written notice of this policy at least once each year, and that's done typically through our student handbook.
That they sign and the parents sign.
Correct.
Okay. That was gonna be my next question, is are the parents at the same time?
If they read it, we don't know, but they sign it.
But they sign it. Okay.
Can't see the codes in the corner because of the way my packet is clipped. JKAA, use of restraint and seclusion. Again, there were some changes to the law, I believe, for this law back in 2014. Your policy had been adopted in 2011, so these changes were required to keep up with some changes to the law. Essentially, the requirements are regarding notification and documentation in, in the event that restraint is used for the safety of a child or other children or staff, and, and/or if we use what's called seclusion, which would mean essentially that a child has, is, is using a, what you might think of as a timeout space or an intervention space for some time to just be under the watchful eye of staff, but on their own for a period of time away from the rest of the student population.
Just out of curiosity, because all of our specialized staff, all of our early intervention staff, all of our counseling psychology staff had to be trained. What's the, what is the prescribed restraint training, and who is trained here?
The law, the law requires that in New Hampshire as well, and so, I am one of our two district trainers, Christina Cochran, Special Education Building Coordinator is the other. We use CPI, provided through the Crisis Prevention Institute. I've been a CPI trainer for 18 years.
What's the, what is the prescribed restraint training, and who is trained here?
The law, the law requires that in New Hampshire as well, and so, I am one of our two district trainers, Christina Cochran, Special Education Building Coordinator is the other. We use CPI, provided through the Crisis Prevention Institute. I've been a CPI trainer for 18 years, I think I figured out recently. However, we train all staff in special education who are working with a child with a behavioral plan that may require any use of restraint or seclusion, our special education staff, our administrators, and essentially anyone who's part of a response team.
Yeah, right.
Who might be dealing with a crisis situation. And part of that training is the debrief process, which is where after an incident occurs, the team is responsible to sit down, not only document what took place, but do some problem solving about how do we take steps to avoid this in the future. It's not a frequent occurrence for us. It's not a frequent occurrence, I would say, in most public schools, but it does occur, and it's a serious responsibility for us. The training course that staff participate in is a minimum of eight hours, that actually, those requirements are actually increasing. The base course is going to be a minimum of 10 to 12 hours moving forward, and there's an annual refresher required of all staff. Policy JLCG, this really is giving us some trouble. Policy JLCG, exclusion of students from school for illness. So, you can see the strikeouts here. We had very specific procedural language in the policy itself, which is no longer required and is no longer considered best practice by the State Office of Student Wellness. So, our, our policy itself now just reads that a student may be excluded from the classroom when he or she exhibits symptoms of a contagious or communicable illness. The nurse is responsible for making that determination, and parents will be notified and informed of what they need, what's necessary in order for the student to return to school. And you can see, then, that other information that previously was in the policy itself has been moved into procedure that talks about what reasons a student might be excluded from school.
I had some questions on this.
Sure.
How is, maybe, maybe it's taken up, how is TB identified?
How is TB identified?
Yes.
Well, it's typically symptomatic, right? So, you might, if a child is having sort of that recurring, and I'm, I am not a nurse or a physician, so this is a disclaimer.
My next question was, who does the diagnosis?
There are typically respiratory symptoms that the nurse might say, I'd like you to be evaluated, I'm concerned, and you, you know, lung sounds, different tools that a nurse would use for evaluation. Ultimately, that determination is made by a physician through a positive result to it.
Okay. So, we're no longer, we're no longer in the era of every kid, every year has to have a TB time test?
We don't do that anymore. Nope.
Yep.
Because TB has been relatively rare, though it does still occur, and there are outbreaks, you know, periodically that we hear about within the state and beyond.
No, I ask that as part of volunteering, I have to have it.
Absolutely. Yep. Great questions. Moving on, I told you, this was a lot of policies.
We haven't done policies.
It's good. It's good to keep this updated.
Policy JLCG deals with concussions and head injuries, and the board did update its policy on concussions and head injuries in 2012. Again, since then, there have been some legal updates, and you can see the legal references that were added, RSA 20551, school districts' limitation of liability, and some definitions. So, we've updated that information. It describes a definition to a head injury, what student sports and student athletes are, and it lays out essentially our responsibilities. The athletic administrator is responsible for making sure that all coaches have had appropriate training in concussion management. There is a removal from play and a protocol for return to play with any student suspected of a head injury. There's education and awareness, and I know this occurs with our student athletes at the junior, senior high level each fall and spring. And then, it just provides some information about the academic issues that often follow. And so, again, when a student requires modifications to the academic workload due to health reasons, the nurse is part of the team that is making that determination based on the recommendation of a physician.
Again, I had some questions.
Please.
What are the grade levels at which children are involved in interscholastic sports?
Seven through 12.
Seventh grade already?
Yep.
Okay. And is jump rope considered one where they might have a head injury?
Well, it's a fair question. It's not interscholastic, but it is, is, and it's true, it can be true for anything. You could get a head injury at garden club. You know, you can get a head injury in drama. You can get a head injury in band.
Right, 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 okay. And which sports would they, I saw something about baseline testing. Which sports would, or which activities would they have to have baseline testing?
Soccer is the biggest one.
Soccer and football?
And so...
And volleyball?
Hockey, yeah.
Yeah, and hockey, too.
But, yeah, but I mean, really, any.
Yeah.
You know, anywhere there's incidental contact, and that, that can happen in almost any sport. Basketball, soccer.
And that's part of their, their fitness for the activity? Okay.
If they don't do it, they don't play.
Okay, so the doctor does that as part of their...
Their school sports.
School sports, physical sort of thing.
Yes.
And what kinds of protective headgear do we have, and how frequently is it replaced?
Yeah, most, the first line of defense actually is the mouth guard, which are individual pieces that each student obviously has fitted to his or her mouth. Some sports, you know, baseball, softball, you have batting helmets and face masks that go along with those. Basketball, it's mouth guards. Soccer is mouth guards. So, those are obviously replaced. Sometimes multiple times a season, but typically, yeah, at least each season.
Usually, parents provide.
Okay.
I mean, for all the kids, I've always provided.
Football, football helmets. We're in a joint football program. You may have read, we reviewed that MOU at the last meeting. Epping takes responsibility for safety checks on that equipment.
Okay.
But, but that's a great example.
I just knew that when all this concussion stuff started bubbling up, that they were looking more closely at helmets.
Absolutely. And, you know, the NHIAA also has some guidelines that they govern in terms of interscholastic sports, you know, that students have to be, have mouth guards in when they're on the basketball court, for example. If they're hanging out of their mouth, the referee will, you know, tell them to fix it or send them off the court.
Yeah. I know my daughter had a friend in volleyball who had a concussion.
Yeah.
But came over.
Yeah, they're very common, and what we know is that, you know, recurrent, it may only take one, but recurrent head injuries put students at greater risk, obviously.
That's why it's good to have the baseline testing.
Yes. Policy JLI, student automobile use. So, again, this had been originally done back in 2008. You had it in two different labels and two different release forms, but they were listed under different policies, so we've consolidated that to be one. But essentially, the first part is students being able to bring vehicles to school, and it lays out the requirements in order to do that. And the second part is students being able to drive themselves to activities. And again, there's a parent guardian permission form required. They can't transport other students, only themselves. We have some students, for example, who drive themselves to SST because they might have a work requirement immediately after school, so it's more convenient for them rather than riding the bus back to New Market and being late to work potentially if they are driving for their way to be able to drive directly or go to their job site directly from SST. So, it's not a common occurrence, and it's typically juniors and seniors who are self-driving.
And the good part about that one is that when we do start doing construction, we might be limited in parking spaces. So, I think it's important that we update this because it will be seniors, juniors, sophomores.
Good point.
I may have missed it, but I wondered about, do we want to have something in there specific about distracted driving or cell phone usage, since the last time this was updated was prior to the change of the law in the state about cell phone usage? Just to reiterate, because I know, first thing out of school, it's first thing out of the pocket.
Great point. At the very least, we should incorporate the legal reference related to that. Yep.
Right.
I guess I missed it. In the vehicle use, I don't see the, can't drive somebody else.
That's SST.
I didn't see it either.
And like sports things.
That's for after-school activities.
No, there's nothing in this policy that says a student cannot drive.
I didn't notice that either, and that makes good sense. And I know, I know that our schools did allow them to have passengers, so it didn't occur to me that that would be in there.
Okay, I will look at that.
I mean, it's a question. I'm not saying they shouldn't, but it...
They, they don't and shouldn't. I mean, we don't, we don't, if they're driving to and from school, that's a parent's choice. So, we have policy regarding whether or not they can park on school property. If they are driving from a school event to a school event, they can only transport themselves.
You're not allowed to take anyone.
That may be in some of those other...
Yeah, maybe in our...
Like SST.
I think it's probably in our student handbook, but I'll confirm that for you before adoption.
I think so.
The next two policies, truancy and student attendance monitoring, are recommended for deletion. They, that information, as now required under law, is codified in your student attendance truancy policy that we talked about first. So, the, again, the driving policy had one form and another form was in a different place, and you had it in your policy manual in two places. One is JILE, and the other is JLI. So, we're trying to correct the coding and have it coded once. So, that's why those are recommended for deletion, because the form, the form is a procedural piece, not actually the policy itself.
Does anyone have any other questions about the policy that you've gone through? Meredith, thank you for going through them thoroughly.
My question?
I think it's beneficial for us to do this as part of our jobs, but also for the public to hear what we're discussing and what the policy changes are, the rationale and legalities behind them.
No motion on these. These are discussion only.
Right.
It's a first read, and we'll be bringing them back, I believe, to the next meeting.
Perfect.
If there are any other comments or questions, please send them to, get more to me.
Perfect. Thank you.
Moving along, let's proceed with the approval of the minutes for the May 4th Public and Non-Public Minutes. Are there any amendments to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 4th, 2017, New Market School Board minutes.
Second. On a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. Kennison, we are going to vote on the approval of the minutes for the May 4th meetings, public and non-public. Is there any discussion of those or any amendments to them? Hearing nothing, I will move to vote on approval of the minutes, the minutes for the May 4th Public and Non-Public Meetings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The manifests, Al, I think you have them.
I do.
Al, would you, I mean, would you proceed with the motion for the minutes? I mean, the manifests?
I move that we approve the manifest, the payroll, to the amount of $284,583.11, total pay manifest, and total accounts payable manifest, $196,241.36, for a total of all manifests at $480,824.47.
Second. On a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Mr. Kennison, any discussion on the manifests? I seek a vote for the manifest. All those in favor of approval of the manifest, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Do we have the MOU for the shared, the updated MOU for the shared facilities position?
It was sent to the board.
Because there was a question about... Ah, yes, we do.
Okay.
And Al, did you have a chance to look at that? Because I know you had an amendment.
I don't want to be picky. I still don't understand what it says. It says, "The school facility department shall remain an independent department supervised by the facilities director." I have no idea what that means.
Meaning that we're not merging the head custodians who work right now under the school department with, providing them with any responsibility to the town or vice versa.
Why would we say that?
Well, the council has adopted this, I think, now, but, so we can go back again. That's okay.
And the reason I'm saying it, by the way, is there are a lot of people confused by this still. And I think it ought to be corrected. It's the last time I'll bring it up, though.
So...
We just want the wording changed.
I mean, it ought to read that the custodial staff is going to report to the, to the school, and the building and grounds staff are going to report to DPW. I get it. But there is no, I, there is no school facility department that I'm aware of. I don't know what that means. And if nobody else cares, I'll, I'll be done with it, but...
Can certainly take it back.
All right, so, should we table this, Meredith, until, or should we, why don't we table until you hear, we hear back from the town council?
Just so we all understand, what's the idea intended to be conveyed by paragraph three, just aside from this?
So, it previously spelled out, and that was the change that was made after the last meeting. It previously spelled out the school facilities department is one, the town is another, and the facilities director's supervising both, but they're not being merged. That's what it was trying to spell out. The question was, I think at the last one, it said the Buildings and Grounds Department within the town, and that was a question as to whether or not there was a Buildings and Grounds Department, and then that was removed.
So, is that really a school facilities department, is there?
No.
Well, I mean, in essence, there would be. It's the head custodians and the facilities director, and the custodial staff who report...
And the facilities director?
Right, who's working for us two-thirds of the time. They're the top of the food chain for the facilities department. So, you have the facilities director, the two head custodians, and the custodial staff who report to that person.
They are going to report to the facilities director?
The, they're going to report to the head, the facility staff, with the exception of the head custodians, will report to the head custodians.
Right.
And the head custodians will report to the facilities director.
And the head, and the custodians here are going to report to who?
The custodians where?
In this building.
Correct. They, they report to the head custodian. I don't know who currently supervises that person.
That's my, that's my whole point about this thing.
I mean, right now...
The custodians who...
There's one person who does the town right now. I assume that first...
There are two people that do the town right now.
In this building?
In this building.
Well, I, again, I don't oversee that, so I can't answer that for you.
It's not, it's not our problem.
We, we oversee the person right now who does this town hall, and I would assume that that person would be assigned to one of the head custodians and report up through that chain to the building person. I, I don't know whether that will continue to be separate people or not, but right now, that's how it works for us.
So, you just want to make sure that we don't pay for the town's janitorial service?
No, he's trying to understand the chain of command.
What, the genesis, and then I'll be done with it. The genesis was great dispute when this position came around as to whether the grounds staff was going to report to this position. Great concern about it. It was, and then it wasn't, and then it was, and then it wasn't. Now, it is not, and that's clear. I don't know who they report to, but it's, it's immaterial. And all I want to do is make sure that, that we understand if the custodial staff here and the custodial staff in the school are going to report to the facilities director, let's just write it down. I don't know, and by the way we're hearing right now, we don't know.
Are you saying that then the grounds staff is no longer going to be reporting to the facilities person?
School department don't know.
Even when they do our grounds?
Right.
But that's, yeah, that's not our issue, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Like, we're responsible for the school facilities folks who are, right now...
Building part.
The head custodians and the staff who report to them. The rest is on the town, and I can't answer for their reporting structure, and neither can Lisa.
And generally, an individual has a job description that says who they report to.
But I...
And if, without that clarification...
Point taken, and if need be, we'll ask the town administrator to come to the next meeting to help clarify those questions. I can't, again, I can't speak to the town part.
I hear you.
Why don't we do that, Meredith, just so that we can have it clarified, and hopefully we can get it listed in the policy more clearly, and then we can...
Which letter? Which letter are we specifically looking at?
Number three.
Oh, the whole, okay.
Just number three, in terms of the supervision of the town custodial staff versus the school custodial staff.
Because we really can't, so let me be the devil's advocate. So you're, when, there's nothing about the town in here, because this is a school board.
No.
No.
This is both.
This is a community contract.
You're looking to put, so it's more defined.
It's just like we did with the finance part.
But point three only addresses the school facility department. So as a standalone statement, do you agree with that?
I, sure.
Yes, so it sounds like you're looking for an additional that says the town facility department will report how?
There is-
No?
I'm done. There is no town facilities department. You're making this up.
Right, no, I know. So I, I'm not sure what-
All I want to understand is for the custodial, if this guy's going to be responsible for the custodial staff in the town, that's the only question I'm asking.
We'll have to get clarification from Steve.
That's right, and I'm saying I don't know the answer to that.
And we can't resolve it here.
Yeah, and I don't know of job descriptions, just getting used to the town side finance, of a job description that is called custodian, so I'll have to identify who those people are.
Right.
Because I think there are a number of people that do buildings and grounds on the town, and they're not necessarily called custodian. But we're on the school side, there definitely custodians reporting to a manager who reports up. So we'll have to clarify what those jobs are.
Well, Meredith, you'll take the lead on that and get with Steve and bring this back to us on the June 1st meeting. Moving along, and then we'll get to that.
Heard sound.
Yes, we have sound now, so we'll finish the items on our agenda and then take it from there. The next thing is the approval of a donation for Chromebooks. Jason Carey submitted it, saying that Ms. Copeland, a Spanish teacher at New Market High School, has filled, she put in a request on donorchoice.org, and we received a donation in the amount of $1,501.61 for five Chromebooks to be used to, in her classroom. I seek a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second, on a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Ms. Alberg, we're seeking to approve the acceptance of the donation in the amount of $1,501.61 from donations.org for the Spanish teacher. Any discussion on that?
Good job, Ms. Copeland.
Move to vote. All those in favor of acceptance of this donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Moving on the agenda, the next thing is the authorization of bonds and approval of a loan agreement between the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank and the New Market School District. As I said earlier in the meeting, we voted last week to bond the entire $38 million of our project for a term of 30 years. Meredith and Lisa, if you guys would like to talk to this agreement, I would be appreciative of that.
Go ahead.
So incorporated in your packet is the actual loan agreement document. The board adopted at the prior meeting, made the decision at the last meeting that it was going to enter into a loan agreement for the, made a decision on the term, as you just stated. So what you have to do tonight is approve a resolution, if I am correct.
Yes. So this is the loan document laying out the total amount to be borrowed, and if you look at the exhibit, it shows the total principal to be borrowed. So that's one, check the box. Do we agree that it will be the total amount of what was on the loan?
We did that at the last meeting.
So now that's incorporated into here, into the loan documents. And then the next part is to resolve that.
So incorporated in your packet was, should have been the certificate of vote.
It's, it should be there.
Yes.
It looks like this.
Yes, they're pulling it out. So someone will need to make a motion to adopt the resolution as spelled out in the certificate of vote incorporated into the packet. And I'll just read it out. "That under and pursuant to the municipal, be it resolved, under and pursuant to the Municipal Finance Act, Chapter 33, New Hampshire RSA has amended the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank Law, Chapter 35A. New Hampshire RSA has amended and other laws in addition thereto, and to voters of the issuer duly adopted on March 14th, 2017, under Article 2 of the warrant for the annual meeting of the issuer, thereby and hereby is authorized the issuance of a $38,943,083 bond of the issuer." Parentheses, "The bond, which is being issued by the issuer for the purpose of financing the construction of one combined project consisting of new additions and renovations to the elementary and junior senior high school. The bond shall be dated as of its date of issuance, shall be in such numbers and denominations as the purchaser shall request, shall mature in accordance with the schedule set forth in Exhibit A to a certain loan agreement hereinafter described, the loan agreement. Shall bear a net interest cost rate as defined in the loan agreement of four and one quarter percent per annum or such lesser amount as may be determined by a majority of the board, that board being the bond bank board. The bond shall be substantially in the form set forth as Exhibit B to the loan agreement, and otherwise shall be issued in such manner and form as the signatory shall be approved by their execution thereof." And then there are additional resolutions as well. "The bond shall be sold to the bond bank at the par value thereof, plus any applicable premium. And in order to evidence the sale of the bond, the treasurer of the issuer and a member of the board are authorized and directed to execute, attest, and deliver in the name and on behalf of the issuer, a loan agreement and substantially the forms submitted to this meeting, which is hereby approved, with such changes therein not inconsistent with this vote and approved by the officers executing the same on behalf of the issuer. The approval of such changes by said officers shall be conclusively evidenced by the execution of the loan agreement by such officers. Resolve that the issuer has no seal, that all things heretofore done and all action heretofore taken by the issuer and its officers and agents and its authorization of the project to be financed by the bond are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. That the clerk and the signers of the bond are each hereby authorized to take any and all action necessary and convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including delivering the bond against payment therefore. That the useful life of the project being financed is in excess of 35 years." Those are your resolutions.
We need a motion to approve. Second. On a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Mr. Kennison to approve the resolutions that were read by Superintendent Nato. Any discussion of the resolutions?
What is the issue, what is the, the issuer has no seal, what does that mean?
We don't, it's the actual physical seal. There was an old school district seal, you know, the big seals that it's down on.
That's what it means.
Yeah, an emboss seal. Ours is really no longer functional. And so we don't have one. Many towns don't, but you just have to verify that that's the case and these are there for official signatures. You notice that I read four and a quarter percent or such lesser amount. Remember, that was the guaranteed maximum. Rates continue to trend around that three and three quarters percent that we've, we've talked about, so.
So they'll come back, Meredith, to a time where we'll know what it is, we'll have to vote on it?
It will come back and you'll actually execute the agreement. So what you're doing is authorizing the bank to go out to market, that you've agreed, you know, that you understand this is the guaranteed maximum. They'll come back to you once they've sold the bond with documents for you to execute and sell.
And could you just go through the timetable one more time? I know you did it last time.
Sure.
So this will be executed today?
Then the bond bank, you have that scheduled with you. I have it further down here, but you don't.
The sa-, the loan agreements will be returned tomorrow to the bond at the initial. And then the governing board there approves, approves this. And then the sale is June 6th. And then the bond council participates in that. And pre-closing, closing is approximately June, I, I don't know if they do it right the day before, but we hope to have the proceeds wired on July 13th. I think that's the key, couple of key things.
So the 6th to the 13th.
The sale is June 6th. The proceeds are wired July 13th. So there are a number of things, like any major documents, that the bond bank, their directors, get involved with in our bond council.
When will we know the amount?
The sale, June 6th.
That's it? So it is-
They go out to market, and, and they've been getting a feel for what's out there all along.
I mean, it will happen that day.
But it will be sold that day, and the rate will be locked and confirmed that day. And essentially, the board chair under your policy is the person who executes those agreements on behalf of the board.
We start paying interest rate when we get the money, July 13th.
Any other questions about this stuff? Seeing no more discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving, approving the resolution for the bond as discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Jen. Along those lines, I need to be authorized by the five, you all, to sign the bond documents as the chair. So moved.
Well, you do resolve that in one of these points.
Oh, it's resolved, so we're done.
We resolve that the treasurer and a member of the board are authorized and directed to execute a test-
So I will be that member of the board.
Of the loan agreements.
Perfect. I will be that member of the board. Before we go into non-public, Meredith, do you want to go back to the superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent's report, since it seems to be functioning?
Well, let's hope so. The community has gone to sleep, so we're hopeful that this is going to work. But I'll, thank, thank you.
Okay, good. Good, very good. Is that home, you think?
...as well as new areas from 2017, 2018, school year. Is a list of activities that took place by the professional development committee in a subcommittee that was created to write our much outdated professional development master plan. The committee met to identify and provide significant in-house professional development opportunities for our faculty and staff based on student outcomes, increased teaching and learning strategies, program analysis, and consistency within the industry. Here are some of the activities that we've organized in-house, as well as the use of hired consultants this year. Some of the consultants we used were Dr. Carol Tome, who was in our district 18 different times to work with grades pre-8 and 4, as well as special education teachers throughout the district on specific reading instruction. Keith from Literacy was able to come on site for two days in January to work with 10 staffers who had not been very trained in comprehension strategies. They also did an onsite refresher, May 11th, with our geometry students as well as our five district coaches in the comprehension, vocabulary, and writing instruction. And they will be back from New Market University on June 26th to provide more in-depth training for all of our teachers. In July, our July 17th and 18th, we will be hosting a Google Bootcamp for educators, not only within our district, but outside of our district. And all of those teachers will have the ability to become a certified Google educator after completing the test. At the junior senior high school, we're also implementing those two different school systems that we're looking at to build a block system for instruction within their school district. They came on four different times to look at how we can provide instruction in the junior senior high school. In-house professional development committee was much advised around the work with Benwell. Working on a K-12 vision as well as curriculum, which is the first act that we've been able to do this with the district. We worked with Dr. Seaman on concussion impacts on education and how it affects our students. Transition work at all levels, at grade level on content-specific curriculum. The PD committee met multiple times, not only with the Department of Education and its four specific people, rosters in charge of the professional development writing plan, but also met as a committee throughout the year. This document, which we are finishing up-
It's not in your packet.
-will be presented to you. Finally, Document 4. Is the outline that we've been using professional development management. As you will see, we have already planned out the themes for each day that we can continue to provide our faculty and staff with the most recent information in our most needed curricular instruction and learning areas. I hope this gives you an overview of all the work that has been done and the work that lies ahead of us for next year. As I've often said, the faculty and staffs that are extremely amazing are going to go above and beyond to work for all of our students. Today, I feel more and more comfortable in this position and left me say to keep pushing New Market to the next level. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you at our next meeting.
Thanks, Meredith. Thank you. Thanks to everyone for getting that up for us. Meredith, it might be helpful, like, moving forward, maybe next year, if, you know, I have a concept, you know, with my limited education knowledge, what the I can processes are, just if maybe we did a presentation on some of those specific
Honey, you should mention that.
Theories and practices so that we know what's being talked about and can articulate them.
Yeah, I would wholeheartedly agree, and one of the things I've talked about, both with Mr. Andruski and, and our school principals, is planning out a calendar so that we have set topics to bring to you at board meetings over the course of the year. We can't get to everything, because there's a lot going on, but, but we want to sort of keep you in the loop about the deeper work that we're doing and help you and, and the public understand exactly what lies behind this. This, this is a very consolidated report on a lot of work, so.
And this is what we should be hopefully looking forward to.
Well, I mean, I, I think that the fact of the matter is we've been so singularly focused on facilities and facilities issues, and we have fortunately moved beyond that and are able to look at the core things that happen in the buildings in terms of educational product that's coming out and the new initiatives and, and new things that way, that I think it'll be good for us to have, you know, just as we've had more students coming in and seeing the fruits of the labor in the classrooms out there. I think it, it's beneficial for us as board members and for the community to see those things in real life, so. Thank you for working on that, everyone, and getting it up to speed. I think that is it on the agenda. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting is June 1st, and we need to go into non-public session under RSA 91A colon...
Hold her, forget hold her to tell you which letter.
Yes, A, 91...
Personnel.
Colon, something personnel.
91A3, and then...
A2, Policy A.
Two.
Policy 2A.
No, no. No, just A.
So we will go into, to non-public under RSA 91A32A for person, to discuss personnel matters.
I'm sorry, A... I'm sorry, boy, I should...
You said it right.
I thought we had it right.
Where is Nathan's handy-dandy little sheet?
It is A, and, well, this is it, but I had marked it up before. A and C, I guess.
A and C, just to cover ourselves. We'll need a roll call vote to go into non-public. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. Alberg? Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton? Aye. We're in non-public at 8:11 PM. Thank you, everyone.